Good evening and welcome to the panel select board meeting here at the panel town office, our regular meeting on Thursday, May 7. On tonight's agenda, we have the agenda approval, minutes from 4:16:15, 4:23:15. Our warrants, our mail, new business, public hearing on proposed variable rate pricing, and hauler registration and reporting ordinance, close hearing, and adopt the ordinance. In old business tonight, we have residents concerned regarding the fire District Two solar proposal, demolition of the North Panel Town owned mobile home, and we are going to revisit the law enforcement here in panel. So gentlemen, what is your pleasure on the agenda tonight?
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, minutes for 4:16:15 and 4:23:15, what's your pleasure on those?
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I abstained, I was there on the 16th.
Okay, Henry abstains. Yes, you were.
Yes, you were.
Was I?
Yes.
I thought I missed a meeting.
No, not this one.
Not that one?
No.
Oh, okay.
So you approved.
And I approve.
You approved, there you go, that's what we like.
I was looking for my name here, I was looking at the minutes.
You arrived at 7:18.
Okay. Warrants.
Wait a minute, you got one more.
There is one, okay, I got it.
Well, I said 4:16 and 4:23, did it?
Oh, you didn't do them separate?
Did I do them separate? All right.
You did them all together.
Okay, I did them all together.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Sure.
That's why sometimes you better sit up here by me.
Maybe so.
Okay, warrants tonight, accounts payable in the amount of $8,486.54. One of the bigger ones there are to get our transfer station office up to par with the new regulations, et cetera. That was $2,140 and a payroll transfer. We also have a payroll warrant here in the amount of $5,266.51. And accounts payable in the amount of $7,365.86. Big one right there was the wastewater treatment, final oil budget, and again, a payroll transfer. And payroll warrant here in the amount of $5,926.99. Those are the four warrants that we have for today. What's your pleasure on the warrants, gentlemen?
Move to approve.
Okay, second.
Second.
Thank you, Henry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
In the mail, we've got a little bit to go over here tonight, we have a letter asking to attend one of our meetings about the small potential land conservation and affordable housing project that is being proposed in North Panel. This is from the Nature Conservancy Vermont chapter, they are looking to get on the agenda on June 11. Is that recorded? Are you going to put them on the agenda for that?
I would like to if the...
Yeah, I don't, anybody have a problem with that?
I don't.
Okay, great. We have a quote from Kelson Electric, gentlemen, here, to install a bathroom exhaust fan in the office bathroom and hook it into the light switch so to the, together, so when you turn a light on, the fan will come on and vent to the outside, which there is no vent, and there is no window, there is nothing in that bathroom. And the amount of that is $575. It's an action item. What's your pleasure on this?
Yeah, I, not a problem.
Okay, so that's a motion.
Yeah, I move, yeah.
Okay, second.
Second.
RJ, second, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the Bennington County Regional Commission's annual dinner meeting is scheduled for May 21st at the Bounty Anthony Country Club, and they hope that we would be able to attend this. The guest speaker this year will be Vermont Lieutenant Governor Phil Scott, and they'll be presenting awards to individuals who have shown exemplary service to the region. There is a sign up sheet here for anybody interested in going. So was anybody interested in going to that now? That is on May 21st, I think that is.
It's a Thursday.
It's a Thursday night.
Usually there are people that are going, I am going, there's others from the office that are going.
Okay. So if anybody would like to go, see Linda on the sign up sheet.
I need to, could you let me know by next week, because they want to know.
Okay. Is there a cost to that, Linda?
I think that was $30.
Is it? I didn't see that in here, but...
That's a conference item for the select.
Yeah, okay. And we have a letter here, Dear Town Fathers, the yearly maintenance was done on the generator, the generator at the elementary school. We, the school board, would ask that you pay half of the bill as you have in the past. We have paid for that in the past in the event that there is a townwide emergency and the school is opened up, that the people have power, can cook meals, et cetera. We're looking at $401.50.
Make the motion to approve.
Okay, second, Henry, all right? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carried.
That's been going on for years, am I correct?
Yes, yes, it has. And this is from the Bennington County Regional Commission, the proposed agenda for May 20th, the Bennington County Solid Waste Planning Meeting, it's at the Arlington Town Hall on Route 7A from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, and here's an agenda for that meeting. Also have a letter from Bill Scully, and basically what he's asking for, does the board have any questions regarding the agreement that was in our packets regarding the hydro plant, the dam down here? I think we went all over that with the right of ways, Henry, and the...
I believe, yeah, I believe we did.
Yeah.
That was all carried through, we made, I believe we made a motion to leave the right of way as well.
Uh huh.
Am I correct?
Yes, yes, you are, and...
For the Prowlty subdivision.
That's right.
Right, and so they're looking for us to sign off on this, so what's your pleasure? Should we sign, gentlemen? I'll take the motion to sign.
I'm confused.
Me too.
Checking on the progress, are questions regarding the Tannery Hydroelectric and our recent inquiry about the option amendment, please feel free to contact me should the board have any questions. We went over this, this is from... Bill Scully.
So this isn't the subdivision on the other side of the river?
This is not the sub, this is, oh, okay, I'm a little, okay.
This is the hydro.
Oh, this is the hydro.
This is the hydro.
On the other side.
Right.
And I believe that that was discussed, something about a right of way, we, didn't we approve that already?
No.
Or was it just discussion?
No, this is totally different, this is the partner, partnering with the Town of Panel and the hydro.
That gentleman was here?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
He needed to have the option agreement that the board entered into about a year ago amended. He's applying now for what he called umbrella funds for the Brownsfield, and he sent a copy of the option, which was in your board packets about a week ago.
Uh huh.
How about, why don't we leave it like this, you guys revisit that, take a look a little closer at the option agreement.
Okay.
Where the changes were made, and just, I mean, he's already gone ahead to do the application.
When he first came, I believe that was discussed because he needed that, he needed that for, for grant or something?
Yes.
Am I correct?
Yes.
I'm lost, I'm at the moment, okay?
Okay, if you want to revisit it.
I kind of know what it is, but then again, I don't know.
Okay, all right. I mean, I don't think we're under any time constraint here.
Pressure, okay.
Okay, so...
We need to take just a...
Can I, is it okay for I write on this to revisit?
Yep.
Yeah.
Everyone look through your packets when you get a chance, or whatever you brought home with you, if anybody needs another copy of the auction agreement, please email me and I'll see if I can...
I probably got that home.
Anyway, anybody can't find it, email me.
Actually, I thought it was, I thought it was for the Tannery right of way when you first talked, okay?
And the terms and conditions of the contract of the Town of Land and the Land Works, that's, that's not one of the same, is it? The terms and conditions of contract between the Town of Panel and Land Works.
There's folks that are going to...
Oh, for the Town Plan.
...assist the planning board with updating the Town Plan.
Right, we need signatures on this for the, for the Town Plan, and there's, there's two copies of it here, it was in the mail. It's basically between the terms and conditions of the consultant and the client.
And the town is the client.
And the town is the client for the Town Plan, so these...
That was down for the...
Yeah.
Once they have a grant to help pay for those.
That's right.
I moved to sign it.
Okay, second, all those in favor say aye.
We discussed this already, they were in.
Okay, motion carried. Remind me, Linda, and I'll sign these after the meeting. We have our Town of Panel Delinquent Tax Report in the amount of $221,079.59 in delinquent taxes, and the delinquent sewer tax is $7,048.2.
I just like the comment on the delinquent sewers looking very well.
Yeah, I noticed that's...
Compared to what it's looked like in recent years.
Come down, so that is good, thank you. And we have a letter here, advised on the legislative alert on the citing of the solar facilities. Senate Pro Tem will offer an amendment, H40 bill, to set a new renewable energy standard tomorrow. The amendment would establish statewide setbacks from solar facilities and provide municipalities authority to establish screening permits. Okay, that is just a letter from VLCT, and FYI for your information. And we have a letter here from, to the board, from the transfer station supervisor, looking for necessary repairs to the facility, the structure, the current office can function for many years to come, the structure simply has to be updated by installing commercial heavy duty lock sets, dead bolts, making it a more secure building, and he would like some action on this. I would like to have a discussion with our transfer supervisor on some of these things, but I will say that how I'm looking at this right now, is he's looking for a, a two, I don't understand what a two inch all thread with two bolts and fender washers, he's looking to secure the holding tank cover, and I think that is the most prominent thing right now for a cost of $85.
Okay, this is above and beyond what we approved.
Yes.
Okay.
This is above and beyond.
Okay, I just, okay.
Things in here are transfer station office costs to, to do some work on the existing office there.
Yeah, maybe you guys really do need to take a site visit and go over there and go over these things really and look at it.
Yeah, but I don't want...
I can, some of this we discussed, this first one right here, this door issue, needs to be done right away.
Yeah.
Well, I thought we approved that.
We talked about it, we didn't approve it.
Well, that wasn't in the package, okay.
We only discussed that we didn't approve everything. So this, this here, this here, we've already talked about, the door issue, that needs to be taken care of immediately, I think.
Right.
Okay, in the swap shop here, repairs were something else that were...
What's the total there?
I don't think the swap shop right now...
It was $113.
I know, but all three items.
This was, this was for the door.
$1,200.
Okay, all right.
$1,243.
And then this one was $1,100.
Okay.
And then we have 85. I think, in my opinion, the holding tank cover is a priority, along with securing the building, which we said. I don't mind that, but I'd like to do a site visit before we approve it all.
Right, right.
So I guess what I'm asking for right now is approval for the holding tank, okay, to secure that, and to secure the current building, okay? So I'm gonna...
The, the office building, or whatever you call that thing.
Right, and put the rest on hold till we do a site visit. So you'll, you'll, okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
So should we schedule an appointment?
Yes, we'll have to...
I already went over, I thought we were already asked to go over.
I went over.
I'll be over tomorrow.
Okay.
I'll make an appointment.
I think you should.
Okay.
Okay.
Not a big trip.
And...
All right.
Yeah.
Walk over the hill.
All right. Is there just one other thing, and naturally, we're, wasn't there something in the mail on the trailer?
Yes, that's under old business.
Old business, thank you, okay.
But the folders were attached to his report, so to say that.
So that is the mail for this evening. New business, public hearing on proposed variable rate pricing, hauler registration and reporting ordinance, okay, that's a close hearing, and adopt the ordinance, so what's your pleasure on that, gentlemen? Do we have any discussion on that?
First you have to read what you're doing.
Where is it?
I've got another one here, just in case.
Do you have one there? It's probably, is it in my folder?
It could be, but I got another one.
All right.
Nope, okay, yeah.
Just in case.
Just in case.
Okay.
Just, um, this variable rate pricing has been on the agenda more than once now, and the document is finalized. The last time that we were discussing this document, there was section, one of the sections on enforcement, and at the time, we did not have an enforcement agent, and I called the BCRC about that and explained panel's situation, and they instructed me to just insert in that section that the select will designate an agent at some time in the future, but we are to go ahead and adopt our ordinance.
Okay.
And so what you have in front of you right now, Rich, if you read that out loud for the public...
Okay.
Tells them what we are doing.
I will do. Tonight, the panel select board will adopt an ordinance entitled Municipal Solid Waste Variable Rate Pricing and Hauler Registration and Reporting Ordinance. This ordinance is enacted to implement a variable rate pricing system to decrease the disposal of solid waste, increase recycling and composting, increase the diversion and reuse of valuable materials in the solid waste stream, and otherwise encourage the responsible use of resources and the protection of the environment, and to provide the equitable and fair pricing for solid waste services. Brief list of the ordinance, subheadings is as follows, the purpose, statutory authority, the definitions, the variable rate pricing, flat fee, the filing and pricing system, registration and reporting, penalties, and civil enforcement, designation of enforcement personnel, repeal and inconsistent provisions, severability, and effective date. Citizens have the right to petition for a permissive referendum for disposal of this ordinance at an annual or special meeting provided in the 24 VSA Section 1973. Said petition must be signed by no less than 5% of the qualified voters of the Town of Panel and must be presented to the select board or the town clerk within 44 days, or June 20, 2015, following the date of adoption. Should a petition not be filed in accordance with VSA Section 1973, this ordinance will become effective July 6, 2015, which is 60 days from the date of the adoption by the select board. Copies of the full text of the ordinance are available from the administrative assistant at 823-0132, 012, 0320.
I see a typo.
Wasn't it 0132?
0132.
Yeah, and that's 0132, I had it right and read it wrong.
I've got an extra zero on there, it's not a parenthesis.
So we're looking for an adoption of this ordinance.
I move to adopt it.
I second. Any discussion? Henry, you happy?
Yeah, I guess so.
Okay.
I wasn't happy when we talked about it before, because, like I said it was before, it's not the way I like to do business, jump into something without knowing the price, but...
I understand.
The whole, the whole...
But we're not in this alone.
We're not in this alone, so I agreed with that before, I'll agree with it now, okay.
All righty then, all...
Not that I like it, but that's, that's like.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I'll hand this back to you, so.
Send the bill, nothing like it.
Yep, old business, residents concerned regarding the fire District Two solar proposal. Gentlemen, both of you, step right up, this is your town, come on up. Please just state your names for the viewers out there.
My name is Steve McKay, and I met Haley. I apologize, but my printer was on the fritz, so I only have two of these, and that's also why I was late, but I'll read off the proposal that we gave to the fire district on Monday. Before I start that, there was a letter that you read during the mail session, it seems that the leadership of the state also feels that solar panels should be backed off of the road a certain, greater than what the regulations are now. Right now, they're 25 feet, this new law puts them back to 75 feet if it, if it gets passed. So with that said, some of the investors, I believe that I'm stating correctly, but some of the investors are hesitant now about the site that was proposed, due to the fact that, you know, adding another 50 feet onto it restricts where they were going to build, which also makes it such that the kilowatts are smaller. So they were originally proposed at 375, now they have, they were talking about...
125.
Is it 1, 125 or 150?
Yeah, 125 or 150.
And basically making a smaller plant that, that would be owned by Green Lantern, and then they would also try to provide some benefit for the community, unlike the last project that they had proposed where it was strictly, the investors were profiting along with the fire department, this one, or the, I'm sorry, yes, the fire district, this one may be some type of compromise, but we don't have any guarantee that the old one isn't going to go through, or that this law is going to be passed, or that the new project is actually going to be consolidated. So what I did, and our, our view was to, to try to provide the fire district with ways that they could increase their revenue, decrease their operating costs, and they wouldn't need to, to put this, this plant across the street from our houses. So this, this, this proposal, they, the fire district is contemplating all of these, these options, they haven't given us any answer yet, I didn't expect it, you know, this, it was the first time that they were seeing it at the meeting, so they're taking the month till the next meeting, hopefully they can come back with, you know, some type of answer, whether they're picking some of them, all of them, none of them, whatever, whatever it may be. So I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but I'll give you the Cliff Notes version of it, is that I talked to the municipal bond bank, the Vermont Municipal Bond Bank, about reconciling their loan, we, I have some numbers in here for raising the water bill, $5 a month. I also have evaluated their operating expenses from the financial data they provided me, and we looked at ways that, that we could decrease some of that as well. So as to the, the purpose, I wanted to make sure that the fire district knew that I, that I wasn't attacking the way that they were running their business, I wasn't trying to put any, you know, say that they were doing anything wrong, I evaluated this at a, from a business perspective, not a personal perspective, so I wanted to make that clear upfront to you guys and to them. So right now, they're, they're paying about $13,000 semiannually, and their interest rate is about 3.8. And when I talked to the, to the bond bank, we could get it down to 3.5, and we can refinance for 20 years. They had some, they had some reserves about adding another six years to the, to the bond itself, but from, from my perspective, if you're looking to get out of the red and you need to generate more revenue, you can, this is definitely a way that, that could do that. So they have about 245K left on, on the bond itself, and by doing this, it could save them $9,300 a year, just by refinancing it, so that, that was more than the original project was, I also forgot to add about the new proposed project, that they're now going to gain free electricity, so that's an average of about $4,000 a year. So before, when we talked, they were going to create about $7,500 extra revenue, now it has decreased almost by half with the, with cutting down the, the solar ray by, by almost half. So refinancing, good, we think that's, I mean, you know, it happens all the time, whether you're, have a bond or a house, when, you know, you want to get your payments lower, you refinance. So the $5, as I was, as I stated before, would, would be about $700 a quarter, $2,800 a year, so almost 3K on that, by, you know, just a slight increase of, of $5 a quarter, so that's another $3,000. So the operating expenses, after, after looking at the financial reports that I was provided, I made a few recommendations, the first one was to reduce the stipend that each of the members receive by a third, which would be from $30 to $20 a meeting, this could save $600 a year. Another suggestion was that the board members that are receiving free water all year could only receive it for half, you know, it would still be, you know, a, they would still be putting their time and effort to something and, and receiving something from it, it's not like I was proposing to take everything away by, you know, saying pay for your water all the time, or don't get a stipend, because I do believe that, that they do deserve something for their time, it's, it is just reducing it a little bit, so half the year for free water instead of the full year. The one thing that I noticed was the Treasury Secretary had a, a flat line of, so basically a salary for, for her time, and I'm, I'm sure that she puts in long and hard hours, but I, I don't see it all the time, I see the, for, for administrative costs, there should be peaks and valleys when the billing cycle is around, and, you know, the months that the, the water bills are being paid, she's obviously going to work more than the months when they're, when the bills aren't getting paid, same thing, I'm, I'm sure she does, I'm sure she does a lot, but I was suggesting that maybe they, the board come to a conclusion of an hourly rate for, so that when there's a month that she works 50 hours, she gets compensated for that month equally, and when there's a month that she only works five, also gets compensated. I estimated that, that savings could be around $1,200 a year due to the, the peaks and the fluctuation in, in her, her time spent. In 2014, it was, it was one-sixth of the operating expenses, and normally, I would think that it should be around one-tenth for administrative costs of managing a contract or a program or company, so that it was a little bit higher and jumped out at me. I also...
The one thing I will say about that from, I, I think it's, and I could be wrong, but today, there's a lot more laws, a lot more compliances, et cetera, and I don't know much about a water company or running a water department, but I'm sure that there's, I'm sure that there's more involved than just billing and collection. There's probably keeping licenses and testing, et cetera, state standards, federal standards, so, you know, I would investigate that a little bit, I mean, that's a great thought, but if you, if you really don't know what it entails to run that department... I mean, eh, that's a great thought, but if you, if you really don't know what it entails to run that department, um, you know, and I get, the only reason I say that is because, you know, look what we're dealing with in solid waste now. I mean, uh, everything is so much more complicated than it was ten years ago, am I correct? Um, eh, eh, and, and, and things, so.
That was the main concern, um, that they had as well. Uh, I think that one sort of, uh, touched a nerve, 'cause I, I'm not, um, I'm not saying anything bad. I was looking at it purely from.
I understand.
The, the flat line of the, of the administrative cost, and if that is the case, throw it off the table, right? It's, it is a, it's a portion of, of the proposal, it's, it's not the whole thing. So if that piece isn't satisfactory, pull it out and, and pick and choose or customize which one of these things would, would be the best for, for the board. Um, so the, the next one is, uh, it's one of the only bills that I pay, uh, with a check. Um, so I, w- we thought about, um, a domain is fifty dollars, and I, I offered my service to help them set up the website, get the, the, uh, automatic bill pay, or, or get a bill pay through, you know, PayPal, or, or through any of the other, um, bill-paying services that they have. With their, their postage and, and, um, stationary being three hundred dollars, even if half of the people paid it online, I, I took off half of their stationary expense, which might also take down some of their admin expenses as well. I didn't calculate that into here, but it's a hundred and fifty dollar savings, uh, by, by switching to online, uh, bill paying, even if it's only for half. Um, this last one, and, and another, um, a touchy subject was, and I didn't put a dollar value on this one, only because I don't know what they do, and like you said, um, things are getting harder, more regulations are being put in place, I get that, but the operator, um, was forty percent of the operating expenses. So I just wanted to, to call that out and, and see if there was a way that they could work with the operator to determine if he was really, um, you know, flatlined out at that, or if there was times that, similar to, to the administrative costs where, where it fluctuates. You know, if they test every other month, is there a lull anywhere? And I didn't put a number on it, but it's definitely something worth looking at when it's forty percent of your, of your operating expenses. So in total, all of the, uh, all of the savings was over fifteen thousand dollars, um, which is half.
Potential, potential.
Pot- potential. If, if, if every one of those things that I mentioned, uh, it has the potential of being fifteen thousand dollars, which is half of their operating expense, and almost four times as much as what the solar field is going to provide them at four thousand dollars a year for, uh, the free electricity that they will gain by the project there. So, um, there was no answers, but they will, they will think about and consider and evaluate what, um, what out of those options would be the best for, for their company. So the, um, the last page doesn't really, um, isn't really for here, that was more, more for them. So fif- over fifteen thousand dollar savings, um, in the, in the refinancing and the reduction of operating costs.
So what brings you here tonight? Just the fact that you, you want the public to know this, or?
Uh, the fact that I told you, uh, last time, that after I presented, uh, this package to them, that I would come back here and present the package to you.
Okay.
Uh, the, the agreement I believe that we had was, um, you know, after I brought this back and the board could evaluate, uh, together if they would agree to signing a letter for the PSB if it does, uh, get to that point.
Okay.
Um, this was sort of just, um, just our way of, of showing, um, that there are other options, and that we do, um, that there is another way than, than putting this field up across from our house.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions on this?
Well, I guess, um, at this moment, I don't have a whole lot to say about it, because I don't have any information to take a, really, to take a look at. I understand what you're saying. Um, uh, the solar panels have popped up.
Everywhere.
Across the country, right? Okay, um.
We don't think that's a particular good location down there for that. You've got the well, uh, with a potential to pollute the aquifer there, you know, with it, that construction site.
That is correct.
And it's so close to the road there, and so now.
I, I mean, I'm not, uh, disagreeing.
Right.
Okay, and I'm, but I'm not agreeing neither, so, um.
Well, I think when we were here the last time, you, you might not have been here.
Well, but, but one of the, but I do understand that, um, um, uh, time, time is, uh, gonna be the answer to this.
Right, they were trying to, they were trying to have that one up and running by October or something.
My feeling is, I don't know, time is gonna be the answer.
Is that what it was, they were gonna try and have that rammed through by October?
Yes, yes, and that was with the old, the old proposed plan.
And we're not sure, I wasn't sure that Green Lantern was gonna be involved with the small, uh, the smaller array. Were you sure that they were still gonna be involved, or was that gonna be a town, the Water District owned?
I believe they said that, um, that Green Lantern would be involved, but the town would be able to buy in to it, so the town would be able to use the electricity that was generated, but there weren't any investors anymore for it, because it was too small.
Too small.
So Green Lantern would still, um, entertain setting it up, um, on that land at a, at a hundred and fifty.
So if I, if I have to put this in, in a nutshell, I guess what the, these folks are looking for is, um, is a letter, uh, just saying.
If it gets to that point.
If it gets to that point, that, um, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Powell, uh, think there are other options, and that, um, this may not be a suitable site for this solar project. Am I correct?
Yes.
That's what their intent is looking for now, so, um, I don't know if we should, we could shoot, we should put this into a motion, that should it come to that point? Would the board send a letter, eh, just stating where we stand on it?
I'll tell ya.
Why don't you let them, why don't you just let this play out?
Play out?
Yeah.
And see how it goes?
And, and I think that, uh, for the Select Board to have a discussion on this, I think the board needs to do that. But I think I want all the members here. Okay, and there's a reason. That way, eh, no one, none of us can say whoops.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay, if I could leave you with this.
I think, I think you're presenting something very important.
Absolutely, absolutely. We have two copies of it here, so.
And if it's important to you, it should be important to us.
And if anybody would, uh, care to look at this, there'll be two copies of it here in the town office, okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, we appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have the demolition of the North Powell Town-owned mobile home. Um, I, I think we've all seen the pictures that our, uh, transfer station supervisor has, uh, sent us the last couple of meetings, everybody has seen them?
Yeah.
Okay, that, eh, it's obviously in, uh, pretty tough shape, and I guess we have, or we're going to decide to, uh, we have decided to demolish it, correct, Linda?
We have.
We haven't done that yet.
We've, it's been recommended, I think.
They've been recommended to clean it up.
Yeah.
Around the outside, which, uh, that's happened, right? Some of it. Okay, I don't know all of it, or, but some of, they worked on it already. I think that, uh.
Oh, I thought they were not going to, because it's such a mess inside also.
They weren't gonna go inside, but they cleaned up around the outside.
The recommendation.
Am I dreaming?
The recommendation, I think, was, was to clean up the whole site and make it a marketable piece of.
Property.
Property, and not, not, not be in the business to own it.
They were going to, but I think they got there and said, oh, boy.
Yeah, I think when they got there and really looked, and then got inside and took a look, that if, if this board agrees that maybe it's in the best interest to demolish the structure, then they could bring in a, a roll-off and put everything into it and take it away at one time. There is that much degree there.
Quite, uh, wonder if this is, is something the town should, we, we ought to consider.
I don't think we should be in the demo business of demoing a mobile home.
Why don't we get, why don't we get a couple prices?
We're, we're not in the demo business, but we do own it.
Well, no, but, no, I, no, I think we wanna clean it up.
Uh huh.
I, I'm, okay, but I do know that, um, um, who clean, who, who does demo? Tam does one, it probably is Tam, Tam, and Tam. I don't, I don't know.
But we have another one also, we have another one at the, at the, at the highway facility, the highway garage. We have another one that needs to be, that needs to be demoed and removed.
Okay.
And that also.
All right, wow, okay, but the main, all right, but that's that one that sits over there, but that's an empty shell.
Yes, yes.
It's disintegrating on our.
Yeah, but that's okay, but that, I think we could take a hole and.
Yeah.
Put it in a, in a, in a container.
Right.
Okay, this down here, I think, is, um, a lot of garbage, the way I understand. I haven't looked at it, I, it's a, it's got prob, it's got issues.
Uh huh.
So why don't we, uh, see if we can't get a price on what it would cost to get it cleaned up? I've seen a couple in Bennington get cleaned up down there, and boy, it's, ooh, top-notch job, you know what I'm saying?
If it cleaned up, well, please be a little bit more specific, so that they understand.
Remove, removal of the, demolition of the mobile home and removal.
Uh, the, the mobile home.
So it's a vacant lot.
The site, eh, when we're done, we'll have a clean site.
A vacant lot.
Right, vacant lot.
Yep. You wanna make that a, a motion?
Well, uh, I wanna find out.
To put it out to bid?
Yeah, yeah, bid it, or whatever you wanna do, yes.
Make a motion to put it up.
I'd make it, yeah.
I'll second it.
Okay, um, all right, we've had the discussion, everybody in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I don't know.
Good thought on that.
I guess a lot of people do it, so.
Okay, um, we're gonna be talking about, uh, law enforcement in town here. Um, we have had the presentation by the Bennington County Sheriff's Department. Uh, we've had Joel Howard and Chad Schmidt down here to talk about us, they gave us some rates, um, and RJ, I know you had the figures down, um, I'll give you, I'll give you my take on it. Um, we have money in the budget for a constable, which includes insurance, insurances, and, and car, and, and hi- his insurance, his salary, and everything. I would like to see us just take that money and invest it into the Sheriff's Department, and have them, um, what is it, thirty point two two hours?
I think so, yeah.
I think it was thirty point two hours a week. Um, to patrol, and also the Select Board, uh, very, various other, uh, agencies of the Town of Powell, such as the Highway Crew, et cetera, would ha- have some input, uh, if there's vandalism or whatever, that we could direct some law enforcement there. Um, I really would not like to see it cut back. Um, it's money that we have budgeted, and it's not an increase to the town. I think the, the townspeople deserve at least that much, uh, of permanent enforcement within the town. Um, and I, I, I'm in favor of, of going ahead and signing a contract with the Sheriff's Department at our current rate. Anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I'm trying to find out what the rate is.
Yeah.
It's thirty dollars.
Thirty dollars an hour, I think it was, um.
That's everything car, no mileage.
Yeah.
Perfectly. Um, I guess my only concern is, I, I don't know where they should focus on first, you know?
I would think, I would think we would have to have, like, a designated person on our board, I would say, that would be the liaison between Sheriff's Department.
And I would have to say that would have to, well, would have to be, but it probably should be the, the chair, I don't know, that's gonna change.
I would think any one of us could do it.
Yeah.
Um, but if he, you know, because I think to have everybody calling the Sher, you know, could be confusing.
Uh huh. Um, Henry, uh, it's, uh, thirty dollars per hour.
He just said, I was looking.
For deputy.
Yeah.
Okay, um.
That's the meeting I missed.
And.
Okay.
The other issue we have too is, is would they be interested in our vehicle, number one?
Well, that's where I was going next. Yes, they would, uh, I was already told that, um, they would probably take the majority. We could come to an agreeable price. There's radar, uh, there's radios, police radios, there's the vehicle itself, there's a, a gun holster, handcuffs, uh, all of that, uh, which by the way, the gun is safely secured, uh, off-site, um, and that's taken care of. Um, so there is some interest in purchasing that equipment now. We could either add that to up the hours, or we could deduct it from the current.
Well, I think, I think, I think that's what we were talking before, was thirty or thirty-five hours, or something before, right?
Around thirty hours a week, right?
That's what was, the, the old plan.
That's what our constable was doing, right?
That's right, so I think we, why don't we just kinda leave it?
As is.
Yeah, and I think, um.
Should they decide to purchase anything, we'll come up with a.
Yeah, and if they, if they want it, let's have, have, I mean, they, they know what, yeah, they're willing to pay.
Right, right.
Am I right?
Yeah.
It isn't what we wanna ask.
No, well, who knows?
But I think, eh, I think we need to sit down with them, and one of us, or the board, needs to sit at, we either need to designate somebody, which to me may, might make sense, or we need to sit down with him and kinda, and explain to him what we want in the contract.
Uh huh.
And then bring the contract back and approve it or disapprove it.
You know, do you want them to just, uh, um, do around here, or do you want them to, um?
I want them in the Town of Powell.
Yeah, uh, once in a while go out on the back road, and then once in a while we'll run that into the, I mean, thirty hours can be used up very quickly, we all know that, come on.
But, you know, the other question is, do we.
But I know that they know their business.
Do we wanna sign right on for thirty hours, or do we wanna try, try, you know?
We can try, we can try a lesser.
See, I, I'm not in favor of that.
Okay, that's just a question.
Because we, we, as you said, we've had a constable that was, I think, thirty-two hours a week.
Right.
And we're, we're in that ballpark.
Well, in, in, I, I mean, I don't have a problem with the thirty hours. The main thing is, is, um, why don't we, listen, we just signed down to send the bill. But, you know, okay.
I mean, we have to see the contract.
I'd like to know.
Wouldn't, and wouldn't you be doing this contract until, like, next election time, because?
Right.
The town has not voted to not have a constable.
They have voted to, uh, hire a law enforcement agent.
But they didn't vote to do away with the constable position.
I understand that, but in the interim, right now.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I'm talking about a contract period.
I think the only thing that got voted on was, um, it was voted that we could, uh, have a, a part-time.
Uh huh, which is what we would have.
And there is nobody that's come forward.
No.
So if you, if you want, if we, if, now, with that brought up, if there'd be any kind of, uh, uh, thing that we should consider, then, uh, keep the hours down to what means, whatever part-time means. If that means anything, I, I don't know where we stand.
Well.
You follow what I'm saying, Linda?
Follow.
Okay, so I mean, if that's what they voted on, then let's just be sure we follow.
Sure.
Follow the.
Thirty-two is more along the lines of full-time.
Is it thirty-two or?
Well, we have thirty point two, 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 two hours a week, so.
Thirty hours.
Yeah, thirty hours a week, that's part-time.
Twenty-eight hours.
Okay, so, um.
No, I, I know.
I would like.
Okay.
I'd like the, I'd like for the board to send the sheriff a letter saying we are interested in a contract from now until, um, election time, um, you know, um, or, or, why not a year? Uh, why not a year, and then?
Yeah, a year.
A, one-year contract, and, right.
Whenever we sign, I, I, I think, I think we're covered.
Yeah, and I, I would say one-year contract, you know, um, eh, for the amount of thirty hours a week, one deputy.
Okay.
Okay?
No.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking, eh, there's options there, I could, I would say, I would say thirty hours a week.
Thirty hours a week, right.
Thirty hours a week.
Right, he could have two people.
And then we could decide different, different things we could do.
No.
Makes sense, that's good.
Here's something to, I think we should, we're getting into this thing. Now you brought up that, uh, anyone from the board. Okay, um, I don't want the job. Do you have time? Do you have time? Would you take it?
Hey, I mean, it's, it's, it's something that, uh.
Let's, let's, let's make it a little different than before, you know? I think if, um, you. Let's 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 make it a little different than before, you know? I think if um e- even you, if you're um as a chairman, um um you can only do so much.
Mm-hmm.
I mean.
I don't mind if one of these guys wanna step up.
If you don't, if you wanna do it, I I'm not trying to talk you out of the job.
I understand, I understand.
Okay, but I'll tell you, I don't know anything about it, but I know that you're in the you're a fireman, and there isn't much uh in the people he's around here, okay?
I agree. He knows where the more problems.
I mean, I don't have a clue.
I don't either. I don't.
Well, I'd be willing.
We say 30 hours, but I don't know.
He would be the contact person for the board.
I'll I'll, well, okay, but I I also think it's it goes, I think one of us needs to go and sit down with them.
And then come back.
And step by step and kinda come up with a plan, and then we'll come back and look at it.
Okay.
And I can do that if you want.
Yeah, I I mean.
As a board, I think that we can move that, yes, we are interested.
Right.
Like you said, yeah.
Let's let's uh.
Let's move that.
Send them a letter and let's have them draw up the contract to be signed by the Select Board.
And you work with them.
Okay, uh to hire their services, a yearly contract, a one-year contract.
I don't think they were looking for a contract, were they?
Well, I'm sure you have to have something, sure, yeah. Yeah, you have to have something here, yeah, for legality purposes, et cetera.
If you want, I can get in touch with them tomorrow and uh.
Well, Linda's gonna send it away.
Why don't you just let Jason speak with them and tell them that the town is interested in moving forward with what he just discussed and bring back to the board some facts.
And a and a.
Well, they already brought the facts.
In a draft contract, and we'll say.
Okay, I mean, we already have the facts. We have the the amount.
I think we should probably talk about our goals, what we want. Do we have problems in speeding? Do we have problems in derp garb?
Uh, let me tell you something. I think, again, I don't wanna micromanage this. I think the Bennington County sheriffs with the three sheriffs in town, eh, I think they're pretty smart people and they have an idea of what needs to be done, and I think all we would wanna do is suggest various other things, and you know, I don't wanna micromanage this either. I don't want it to take up a a a lot of your time, et cetera.
I don't think I don't think you are. I think just, I think it's it's simple.
I think they're.
We have letters that come in, um concerned letters like that.
I wanna know what they think.
Make sure we got a copy over to them and.
I don't think it's really gonna be any different than if you're having a constable that you oversee.
But I but I mean, I think there's other things I'd I'd like to see.
We didn't oversee the constable. It was an elected position.
I wanna, I'd like to see a monthly report, a detailed report, monthly report as to.
Which I believe we we had asked for.
Right.
Uh we we did ask for that, a monthly report as to where patrols were, the um if any summonses were given out, et cetera. You know, um we did ask for that, and I believe that was.
I'll contact him and bring something back for next week.
Okay.
If that works.
Do you need a motion?
Well, um.
Or we don't wanna do it.
I I would like a a motion to go ahead and contact the Sheriff's Department to get ahold of a contract to sign for one year of service.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay.
Although, eh we, any more discussion on this?
Yeah, no, I would like to, no, I don't know. We want two motions. Then I'd like to make a motion that.
Well, we can't make a motion and second it without.
Can two things be in the same motion, or do you want that separate?
Why don't you amend it? Well, I don't know what your motion is.
No, no, I'll go ahead.
Okay.
Uh what I wanna do is uh make a motion that Jason was gonna be the contact person.
We'll do that next.
Okay, very good.
Okay, right now, we have.
We have a motion to contact the Sheriff's Department to um regarding the one-year contract.
Right, for services for the Town of Powell.
Okay, that takes care of that.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, Henry, you'd like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that um Jason is gonna be the contact person.
The liaison between the Select Board and the Sheriff's Department.
And the Sheriff's Department.
I'll second that.
Okay.
I can't, I'm the chair. I'm sorry. I can't do that.
I'll second.
Roberts Rules of Orders.
I do.
Lost my head.
Yeah, okay.
All those in favor?
Aye, very good.
Okay.
There.
We can call you assistant chief now.
No, but just. I just think to have five different people.
You're right.
No, no, I think that's good.
You're right. Anything else uh that anybody would like to bring up tonight?
Not on the agenda.
Okay.
Learn that, the older meeting law, right from the Secretary of State.
Very good. I'll take a motion.
So how do we put things on the agenda for future meetings?
Contact me to.
During the week?
Mm-hmm, by Tuesday. Our agenda needs to be posted on Tuesday.
Okay, so we can't even ask questions on last?
You can ask questions. You just can't take, you can't like take action on things without telling the public.
How are we doing on the drug policy?
I already um took it off the computer and put it in the box for the um road crew.
Okay, so we're moving along. Okay.
Anything else?
No. But you can't, wait a minute, but you can put it on the agenda when you come, if you wanna uh discuss that.
Yeah, you should be doing your agenda at the beginning of the meeting, stick to. Don't don't open this up at the end of the meeting to.
Well, I I think.
Out there to add things.
I'm not adding. I said, does anybody else have anything to say?
Animal control has happened.
It's interpretation.
Yeah.
Are animal control issues, are those scheduled for this month?
I think the animal control um folks are looking into the regs.
Okay.
Um Nelson provided for them. I sent the ordinance, Powell's ordinance, and uh if they would like, they could get them in for next week. That I know Casey has bids and things that would do. Um I guess from the board that your second meeting is a special